Weekend's a big weekend, Hubbardston Field Day, sponsored by the Hubbardston Lions. It's gonna be Saturday, the fourteenth, from nine to three at the Curtis Rec Field. And there's gonna be an inflatable water slide, pony rides, and uh there's a raffle where you can supposedly a grid on the, on the ground and they let the cow loose.
Yep.
And wherever the cow poops, that person wins. That's awesome. So you should come buy a ticket for that.
It's the cow flop raffle. There'll be five dollar tickets and ten dollar tickets and if the cows go, there'll be two cows, and if the cows go in your particular square, there's obviously gonna be a ten by ten grid, so there'll be a hundred squares, depending if you're a blue ticket or a yellow ticket. Depending upon which square they go in, if you're the lucky ticket holder, you win the prize.
So my daughter asked, what happens if it goes on the line?
Wherever they're.
I don't know.
We have, we have a, 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 a committee of judges.
Oh.
Who will weigh the volume.
Okay.
And depending upon where most of the volume is, in which square.
Bring a shovel.
That's where.
That's kinda what I liked, the answer was gonna be, so that's, that won again.
And that's how we have fun in Hubbardston.
Fortunate in my day talking about this, so my job's pretty cool here in Hubbardston. Uh rain date is the fifteenth, the next day on Sunday, but it looks good so far, so.
And announcements, quick shout out to uh this past Saturday was the twenty-second annual Hubbardston five K run. Um which uh we had great weather, wasn't a little iffy going into it, but we had great weather. Um Mark Wiggler, uh and his wife, his daughter were there as well, they've, as well as the library trustees, who have coordinated this over the years, uh let us all know that they've raised uh over seventy thousand dollars for the library since inception, and doesn't look like it's going anywhere anytime, any soon, so we thank them for that. Yeah, it's great. So, okay.
I vastly overstated my running ability, so I did run it, it was great. Came in twenty-eighth place, not first, so. And lost to Dan's daughter, just humbled.
She came in eighth, she's thirteen. Shout out Dave. Um and I think we're going to go a little bit out of order, so that was items one and two, we're gonna go to four uh because of the present company, uh move things along a little bit. Uh our first item of new business is the Streeter Road uh Order of Taking. Ryan, you wanna get us going?
So uh just to set the table here, Streeter Road was um, the plan for Streeter Road was approved by, by this board and then town meeting. So the last hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty days after town meeting in order to kinda cross the Ts and dot the Is on, on what's needed. So what's been going on is the final plans uh have been signed by the planning board and are, are available. We need to do what's called an Order of Taking, uh and take easements on these properties, no, no land, just easements in order to facilitate the public way and file this with the registry deeds, and then Streeter Road becomes a public road. So tonight, what needs to be done is the Board of Selectmen needs to consider the Order of Taking. So we have a copy of that from legal, it went back and forth. Several lawyers, but it's been vetted quite heavily. Essentially, uh the residents of Hubbard, of Streeter Road signed a waiver saying that they would give their rights uh to, to this easement. Uh the only, the only one who did not sign it is Forty-One Grants Road. Um and that's where we are.
Okay, well, I guess um, um, this was the, you know, as we talked, this was another step in the steps of uh what needs to be done. Um so here we are tonight, uh we have some representatives from Streeter Road that are here, and I guess uh at this point, before we get too much further into it, if, if anyone would like to say anything towards this, um you know, just raise your hand and be recognized, if not, then we'll, we'll carry on with the discussion of this item. Does anyone out there wanna talk about this?
So probably just to say that, if, you know.
Can you just state who you are?
Uh I'm Deb Reed from Streeter Road. Um just the Order of Taking is really just a, almost like a formality because it doesn't change the status of anything on the road. Um there already is easements on every single property that abuts Streeter Road. Um so the only thing that changes is that we are gonna get the privilege of having the town uh maintain our road for us. Um and save us, you know, thousands of dollars on a yearly basis, which we are incredibly grateful for, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Sharon Begley from Forty-One Grants Road.
Hi Sharon.
Uh my husband and I were not signing the um, what do you call any of those?
Order of Taking?
Order of Takings, because we were told, that we were asked what we wanted and what we said we wanted with Hubbardston. Okay, maintenance of the road, utilities, plowing. And it's a safety issue, and Deb Reed and her lawyer, Michelle Phillips, said the road was gonna be moved over. And it wasn't. And everyone else on the ro, on the road, the road was designed, they all have a buffer zone. Okay, my property bounds have been hit by the um, the grading of the road. Uh here's an, one of my bounds that was hit by the snow plow in the winter. And I wanna know, how are you gonna maintain this road if there's no buffer zone? We're the only ones that don't have a buffer zone, and I don't know why it was designed that way. Is there any other public roads in town that don't have bu, a buffer zone?
Can I, can I just jump in here? What, what's a buffer zone? Can someone describe that to me?
It's, it's an area between the travel way, say it was paved, uh it, 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 and it's an area where country drains would go, you put the utility poles, it, the sno, when you plowed the snow, the snow would go over there.
Mm-hmm. I'm not gonna even pretend like I have any idea whether or not, yeah, eighty miles or.
Yeah. Well, that's why I mean, the, does this, who designs road like this? You know, if, if you were gonna have a, a subject, you would have someplace to ma, be able to maintain it. Like, how's Trevor gonna maintain this road? He's already hitting my, my land bounds. And he's already, already covered them up. And how come we weren't given a buffer zone and everyone else was? And it's a safety issue. I spent thirty-seven hundred dollars after my land was clear cut, replanting it, doing work on it, and I go out there and work on it. So that's why we're not signing this. No one took into consideration what we need for this to become public.
Okay, anything else from anyone out, uh outside this table? Ryan, can you, thank you, can you sort of go on uh again about what uh, what would need to be done for us to decide whether or not to take the next step?
So um, it, it can be, it can be a little confusing for especially residents watching to understand. So th, this road was approved at town meeting, as, as the plans were. So tonight isn't, isn't discussing whether or not it's gonna be approved or changed, the town has already said this is the way the road is gonna be. Uh what we're talking about tonight is taking of land, not lands, taking of easements in order to facilitate things like maintenance. So every road has easements. Uh the easements are delineated on the plan with the solid line, and the tr, the traveled way is the dotted line. If you look at the plan. How the road was constructed, uh that was decided by, I'm not gonna pretend to be an expert in that, it was decided by the, the surveyors as laid out to the planning board, this board, and to town meeting.
Okay, so what we'd be doing then is, is essentially we'd be um, uh we wouldn't necessarily be accepting the Order of Taking, but we'd be basically accepting the easements um that are a part of this next step.
Taking the easements, yep, saying these easements exist, based off the approval of the town meeting.
Taking the easements. Okay. Okay, now I'm just trying to make sure we understand what we're talking about here. Okay. Anyone at the table have any, uh I know it's confusing, we've had um many discussions about this, anyone have any, anything they wanna bring up or ask questions to refresh their memories about, or, or are we uh at a point where we wanna take some action on this?
Well, I'm confused in terms of how she was describing her property. Uh it sounds as if there is no option anyway uh to give her a buffer zone. She'd be taking more land away from her. If I'm understanding the way you're describing it, the, the only way, the only way something could be satisfied you
You move the road over.
to give you a buffer would be to take more land of yours and create a buffer zone.
No, to, to move the ro, the road over, like Deb Reed said. They were gonna move the traveled way over, within the middle, within the middle, say this is the, this is the the easement of the road, supposedly.
The plans, the plans are here.
Yeah, this is, this is my section, as you can see here, there's a buffer zone. The road is, is within this layout line, okay? Over here, my property. The road is all right at my private property. So when you design a road, you put, there's, there's, the road is usu, you know, in the middle, and then there's an area where you have your country drainage, snow plowing, that way you're not hitting people's property bounds. There's this area for safety. It, it's just not the way you design it.
Well, I was, I'm curious if there was ever a design on it, because I'm remembering some of the history brought up, that was, this is a road that was a country road.
Yes.
Hundreds of years ago, a cou, couple hundred years ago, or a hundred years. So maybe that they just inherited what was there.
But if you go, if you wanna have a survey or lay it out, why would you give everyone else an area for that and not one, one of the property owners? Only one of them.
I can't speak to that, I'm just saying, it's from the sounds of it, they said to, to satisfy what you need, you're saying the road has to be moved.
It's discriminatory. And how's Trevor gonna maintain it? He's already hitting my bounds.
Yeah.
When he grades it, how's he gonna grade it? But, uh, you know, they're hitting, they're hitting, like, like I said, the snowplow's hitting them.
Good.
Uh this, this was.
Who are you?
My name's Peter Russell, Twenty Streeter Road. Um I hope that all of you are at the town meeting in June.
We have to go.
The plan.
They pay us for it.
There was lengthy discussion at the town meeting, the plans were available for the public to view at multiple hearings prior to town meeting, including this meeting. Um the town meeting has instructed, I believe, the town to take this road as it was designed. I don't believe that there's any room for negotiation at this point, I think as, as Ryan might have suggested a few minutes ago, we're following through with the town meeting's order. Um, you know, Sharon's questions maybe can be answered after this is over, or at some other point, but I don't know that they have any um, I don't know that the selectmen have any um latitude to change anything at this point based on the town meeting's uh vote.
Maybe not, but we, we still welcome the discussion, so, but I do appreciate, appreciate the comments, so. Um in that same vein, I do, I do agree that we, we have to, you know, decide whether or not to make a motion, somebody's gonna make a motion for or against or whatever, um that would be to um, uh accept the easements.
To approve the Order of Taking.
Approve the Order of Taking. And to sign it, so that's where we're at.
Or not approve the Order of Taking, but this is an administrative function, the, the town, this is a public road now.
Right. Yeah.
The town meeting vote is what seals it.
Yep.
Uh the, the road process leading up to town meeting is what seals this being, so right now we're in the administrative phase of figuring out how to make sure what the plan says happens. And uh that's what we're talking about here. So the plan has already said that these sections will be taken for easements. The Order of Taking is just solidifying that and then basically submitting it to the registry deeds to record it.
Okay. So I'll make the motion, if we're ready for a motion, okay? I'll make a motion to uh accept the Order of Taking, and what was the other?
And you have to sign it.
Oh, but it's, is, can I just leave it as Order of Taking? Do I have to mention the easements?
It's just accepting this Order of Taking, which lists all the easements.
Okay. Make a motion to accept the Order of Taking, and that, as listing all of the easements involved.
For Grants Road?
Streeter Road.
Streeter Road, yeah.
Streeter Road, yeah.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? At the table or outside? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes. Okay, unanimous? So do you have s, something for us to sign tonight?
Just one copy?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just bring till Ryan gets back?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just notarizing it, if anyone's curious.
Selector's signal comes after all the way down last, doesn't it? So we're taking a vote, so.
Oh wait, I thought that was done by the town, so.
Yeah.
All right, Ryan, um so I, I guess I would let you, you decide, do you wanna continue on with new business here, or do you wanna jump back up to department goals before we get to?
Yep, I just want to pass this baton onto you, this is the three mile hour business that you um are going to be needing to hand off to town council.
Sure. Okay. Yeah. Okay, sounds good.
And so.
So for, for your edification, we have the three mile hour sheets, assigned Order of Taking, and the certified vote from town meeting, which gets recorded with the registry deeds. All within less than a hundred days.
Boom. It's done. All right.
You guys are amazing. Thank you for sticking with us through thick and thin and for helping us through a very difficult.
Great municipal effort.
Thank you for your special support. Persistence.
Three years.
Glad I could help.
Three years, we've been, you've been coming here for three years, thanks.
You guys are gonna miss me.
Everybody on Streeter Road.
Well, don't go away.
You'll find a new guy.
Oh, I, I, I watch you guys regularly. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, bye guys. Um anyway, back to that, Ryan, um. So anyway, uh do you wanna do department goals, be, you know, I know later on in the business, we're gonna be getting to select board goals and town administrator goals. Wanna jump back up or what?
Sure, yeah, I guess.
Sounds good, we'll do that.
Get that up here.
So we're gonna move it.
Go to item three, department goals.
Okay. Get this up on the screen for the millions of fans.
For Deb?
Okay, so um I will go through this presentation, this will also be pushed out to social media and made available online for the remainder of the year. Um but that should presented here to the board, so this is the culmination of department effort to create goals and set structures up for the year. We did this last year. We expanded on it a little bit, um successfully, I believe, allows the staff to see what it is that they wanna accomplish in the year, and then of course creates that accountability with the public. So we set these goals in order to unify our efforts, uh empower our staff members to act without direction, without specific direction on a day-to-day basis, and then hold them accountable. The structure of the goals, uh one is for professional development to make us all better, one ties to the overall strategic vision as uh put forth by me and this board, which I'll show you next, and then one is department-specific, so focusing on the mission of each department. So our overall vision is to develop our competencies at the department level in order to increase public trust. Public trust allows us to then operate on behalf of the public in order to accomplish what needs to be done. So this is, uh vision is laid out by charter, so the master plan and vision from the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, and Planning Board feed into staff operations uh as executed by me for you. And we accomplish that in many ways, through the budget, through policy, and then through growing our various capacities and competencies. So the output to the residents would be service and um, and then development of the various areas of town. We assess these through our goals, our reviews, feedback, the votes that are taken, uh financial reporting, and then uh also through the reports that we put out, the transparency we try and give, and our planning, forecasting, and benchmarking. So this is a, a very small graphic that guides the staff, so how do we increase our competencies? We focus on professionalism, fiscal responsibility, creating and, and sustaining strong policy and procedure and communicating with each other. We encourage innovation and accountability in order to become more competent and increase public trust. And all of the departments are, we kick back goals that aren't following what we call SMART goals, which is fairly well-known acronym now. Goals need to be specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-bound. So I'm not gonna read every single goal, I just wanted to show you some of the highlights and some of the department improvement plans from each one of your departments. And if you see anything you wanna talk about, stop me, obviously you can talk about um anything you wanna change or, or anything that, that interests you at the end.
So do you have a um, a all-department sort of um meeting to sort of start this pro, process off, or is it, is it, and then does it get individualized, or how's that go?
So in early July, um I believe in leading by example, so I, I give them my goals and my accountability, as I presented this board in July as well. And talk about how I believe that, that my competencies can be increased to help them perform and to help the town. Uh and then we give this presentation, we talk about how we can develop goals better. Then they're sent to the departments to send back to me, I look through them, I meet with each department to talk about them. We agree on a revision, if there needs to be one, and then that's what's presented to you is, is the final copy. So it's been an iterative process, interrupted a little bit by my military service, probably would've been given to you about two, three weeks ago. They have existed since then.
Taken, taken seriously by everybody, I mean, it's well, well received?
Yes, um and they're specifically designed to be accomplishable, but also, you know, th, this isn't like changing Hubbardston, it's how can we get more competent in order to get better, and, and a lot of them build on last year's as well. So I don't do goals just to do them, um I do think that they should be something that we follow, and we check in with uh s, the staff quarterly on them. So for me, um and we're, again, we're talking about professional development, vision, and department goals, I'm just gonna hit on one for each, and then talk about department improving. So for me, uh one of my vision goals is to really solidify our human resource policies, I keep telling you, it's one of our weaknesses, and we're working on it. It's been my main focus so far in quarter one. So I wanna get those policies solidified through grant by January first. And then tied to that, my department improvement plan is to um, to publish a guide, to streamline our hiring procedures, and to um track mandatory training, make sure we're hitting everything that we're supposed to do, and then create a new hire mentor system. Our first meeting about that is on Wednesday to discuss uh some of the goods and bads of our hiring process. And it's all tied to retention and the budget as well, we can't keep losing employees and spending money on that, so we wanna create a system where people uh understand what their responsibilities are, and allows us to train them even though we have very limited staff. For the town clerk, this is Lori Reed, um just wanna highlight her department goal. She's uh purchasing and implementing through our current budget, uh it is in the budget. Boarding committee software, so we can modernize um and make sure we're compliant with our, our volunteers, our elected officials, our committees, and et cetera. So this will be a report she can publish, do vacancies, we can, it's also public facing, so we can show not just from the website or, or a spreadsheet where we are, this will definitely help this board as well. And she, it gets mandatory trainings, notifications are sent directly to our volunteers, so they can kinda self-manage it as well, which takes a little bit of burden off the staff. And then for her department improvement plan, she's gonna purchase, implement, and train on the new voting machine, which you will, it'll be a star on social media, so everybody will get to see it. It's something we've had money for, for a couple of years, but we've challenged her to commit to this and get it going with three big elect, four big elections next year, including a presidential, so we wanna make sure this is in place and working before that year.
Is it a robot?
It is, votes for you.
All right.
Just kidding, that's felony and a joke.
Walks around telling people.
Um encourage anybody who wants to see it, they, they're gonna do a presentation on it in the next couple of weeks. Um it's, it's a pretty good system used by a lot of people, obviously heavily vetted. For assessing, we just hired Iris Rivera, our brand-new assessing assistant, uh she's committed to attending two annual workshops. She's going to a Microsoft Excel class to improve her, her skills and abilities there, and she's gonna complete assessment administration. She's pretty motivated, I think she'll accomplish this before the turn of the, uh the calendar year. Uh and then uh for office improvements, you can't see it, but behind me, we've moved the assessors to the Slade Building. We already have increased communication with them, um they're gonna make that a nice space, and it's gonna be open all the time, even when the assessing assistant isn't there, so people feel like they're getting constant customer service for assessing. Even though we're only budgeting for twelve hours, it'll feel much more open and welcoming, and that's their goal. Veteran services, our new VSO, Sarah Wyman, uh she wants to work with the Council on Aging and other community organizations to in, increase her outreach, set up meet and greets, uh reach out with veter, to veterans, just something that, that hasn't been done here as much. Uh definitely really honing in on that, working with the Council on Aging and being a presence in that facility to help to help widows, veterans, their family members, in order to make sure that we're taking care of everybody. And she's committed to a kind of an ambitious goal for her department improvement plan, she wants to introduce a veteran-friendly parking spot here at the municipal building in Hubbardston.
How do you, how do you do that?
So uh it'll come before this board to approve one of the spots being set aside for, you know, a priority of people, but uh our veterans, disabled veterans.
Do you need a plate?
You'll need, ideally, yes.
I'm just asking, I'm not enforcing.
Although I could probably yell at a veteran or two, it probably wouldn't be too taken too kindly, but yeah, it would be a, a sign and, and just a commitment, so. That, that is a big commitment on behalf of the town, she'll be, she'll be definitely coming and, and talking to you about that, whether or not it's worth it, and um, and what we should do with it. That was a cool plan, though. Council on Aging, this comes from Claudia, she's gonna host the MCOA training for uh current and prospective members. Uh that's the Mass Council on Aging, to try and increase the efficacy of our, our Council on Aging volunteers. And then she's actively recruiting for her programming using current sites, town sites, and integrating more with our social media. Uh they're looking to renovate their kitchen and to make it more uh user-friendly, so that's their building improvement or their department improvement plan. Uh they've been planning that out for a while, and they're gonna execute that soon, using existing funds. Public Works, Travis is heavily focused on executing the road maintenance plan as presented. We think that's helping with resident concerns, complaints, and comments, uh just focusing on a plan, making sure they're seeing it's being executed and committed to. Um and he's been helping me apply for grants, uh looking at things that might be eligible for the tip, like the Brigham Elm Street section. Engaging with T E C to try and consider whether or not that would be a good smaller tip thing, that, tip project that we could kind of fit into the overall picture, and then we did recently apply for a strap grant, which is a, a grant that allows small towns to, to get more road funding. And then for department improvement, they're gonna add a, uh using existing budget funds, a lean-to to the salt shed. It's gonna cover a lot of the DPW equipment and try and make it last longer. Uh and also work on the drainage and other things in their area in order to, again, limit the wear and tear on vehicles and other equipment. Built by, built by Monty Tech for the cost of materials. Travis does a good job of stretching those funds.
Yeah, that was a good idea, and uh use of resources to get that done.
Yeah, so they're just paying for the, the wood that you see if you go down and visit, um and the Monty Tech students get credit, academic credit for it, so it's not free labor. They actually get academic credit for building that stuff for towns, they do.
So it's a win, win-win on both ends.
Yes, um we have a very good relationship with Monty Tech, and happy to see some of our students involved there as well. For the police department, the vision goal, uh they wanna do a couple of community classes, or rape regression defense, or RAD class. Uh Officer Don Blood is certified to teach that, that'll be coming up soon, and then gonna hold a citizens' police academy, which I think will, will get a few folks interested in um the operation of police, kinda demystifying a little bit for, for residents who are interested in that. And she.
Ryan, question, you know if there's an age limit on the RAD class? Is that adults eighteen and over only?
I don't think that it would be that high, but I'll, I'll check, I don't know off the top of my head, but I'll get you that answer and put it out publicly as well.
Thank you.
So uh the chief and I are also looking at um trying to protect the police equipment and help with uh, you know, police morale and response time by looking to see if we can cover the police vehicles on the front of the Slade Building with a similar type of lean-to, or looking at the same type of options as Monty Tech, and working with the buildings. This might not be possible, but um it would save some time and money to not have to run the vehicles all the time, clean them off, and uh obviously saves on wear and tear of our cruisers, we're not replacing them as often.
Maybe solar panels?
I was just thinking that, I swear to God I was gonna say.
I will put a solar panel on myself.
Yeah.
Ready to go with solar.
Please don't do that.
That would make me very efficient. The um, the health department, um they're looking to update their training manuals, um their guidebooks, and making sure that everything is compliant, uh we do rely a lot on volunteers and residents who need to be trained in this material, believe it or not, there isn't a sophisticated training program. Although we're very lucky, we get people with the type of experience that can accomplish this, we wanna make sure that any resident who wants to serve on the Board of Health can be, can be trained and, and execute the mission. So one of the department goals is to make sure that's sustainable. can be trained and execute the mission, so one of the department goals is to make sure that's sustainable. And then Kelly from the health department is working on building business-specific packets to explain the processes when people come in for their permits, to hand them something that they can understand and use. So when the inspections happen, there's a better relationship between town and business, especially our new businesses. The library, library programming and execution has been great under our interim director, Christine Barbera. Her vision goal, the goal tied to vision, is to implement aspects of the strategic five-year plan. And complete some of the projects that have been working for a long time, so she's done a good job working with the trustees to make sure she's picking up where Jane left off. And executing those things that are gonna make our library even stronger than it already is. And they're focusing on recruitment, you're gonna see a lot about recruitment coming from the library, getting more members. This month, my column for the Hubbardston Living, which is the online newspaper in town, was focused on the library recruiting and the different things the library does to try and get people to use the building and its programming. Sandy's committed to, Sandy, our collector treasurer, for her own professional development, now that she has her certification, she's gonna get more involved with the Worcester County Treasurer collectors, and gain some knowledge from her peers, and reach out a little bit to move beyond Hubbardston, which I think is a great goal. And then for her department improvement plan, tax title procedures, which are very complicated and can get confused, but are very important because it's how we collect our taxes and collect those taxes that are owed, she wants to create some procedures that can be followed. She didn't inherit the best set of procedures, so she's been working on them, and now we wanna make sure that those are codified, so that hopefully she never moves on, but if she does, then those can be continued. It's very important you don't lose sight of how the town does this particular type of business. For the building department, and we're trying to get the departments to do this together, but create a welcome to Hubbardston guide for permitting in order to streamline the processes and make it more user-friendly, so this is checklists. And just how can we, how can we help you move through the permitting process so that we can get our building projects done quicker? Which means more money for the town and more services for the residents.
Online guide?
We're gonna try and get there.
An online guide?
Yeah, so it'll be physical and online, and then hopefully in the next year, given this report due next year, it'll be how to make it interactive online.
Okay.
It's sort of the long arcing goal.
Okay.
And then for department improvement, we're gonna implement new software that hopefully will be more public-facing, where people can submit permits online, which will free up some efficiencies in the office and the staff. We're pretty close to this, just finalizing the details on purchasing the software, making sure it makes sense. In the planning department, for those who don't know a lot about planning, it's very complicated, confusing. And if you don't have sustainability from year to year, from board to board, it can get difficult to follow, and a lot of these are projects that are twenty years long. They're not, you know, six-month-long projects, so we wanna create a series of checklists, this is Christina Setcliff. And assist applicants to make sure that everything's going the way it should, and also have the planning board following those same processes, so that we're accurate and efficient. We don't, we don't lose track, but we don't have to research and figure out what's going on from project to project as you change and turn over staff. And then for her department improvement, we have, as you can imagine, we don't have a lot of space for record storage, record storage is a problem here. Our town map collection is, we have them, and they're in a good filing system, but they're not very accessible. So we wanna create a directory and a concept of organization, so that people can use these maps more efficiently. And we're not spending as much time hunting and finding when people do need a specific map.
Where is that located, or are they above the temporary fire station?
No, that's actually over in the library basement.
Over here now, okay.
Brian, our record storage, did we look into it, get it using a classroom, or no?
We did, they said no.
Okay, no.
Cause they don't have room, or what was the reason?
They don't have room. And our fire department, so focusing on their vision goal, how can they increase their competencies in order to increase public trust? Chief Hayes is gonna focus on the call firefighter and EMT staff, trying to recruit and train more personnel that can be there for on-call service, that improves our services.
How do you do that? How do you recruit and get the word out for that sort of stuff?
So you would recruit like a regular job opening, the problem is, it takes more than that to get someone to do this. You're talking about someone who normally has another full-time job that's committing to something to help their town. So the fire department's gonna have to go above and beyond here and personally recruit, and get out more than just a, you know, a Facebook post. So they're committing to that, they wanna get a couple people, word of mouth helps, talking to other staff folks, and I've asked how I can help in this particular case. But we need call firefighters, it's hard to get them, but once you get good ones, you're usually really committed, so we wanna hire a couple more. Again, this isn't adding to the budget, it fits into the current budget structure. And then our town accountant, Kelly. Kelly, our new town accountant, she's focusing on working with me, we wanna develop without paying for the fancy software, sort of an open checkbook type service delivery to the residents, so this will be up on the town website on the accounting section, showing how money's going out and how money's coming in and going out in the town. These are public documents and available to anyone at any time, but we wanna make it easy to find for those people who wanna track our finances.
Like per pay period sort of thing?
Yes. It'll be budget versus actual to start, and then we'll get into more details. Budget versus actual means, this is what we said we were gonna spend, and here's where we are as we're going through the year. We wanna, we'd like to get eventually, and this might be a couple of years out, but a transactional open checkbook, so people can see what we're spending money on. Again, this is something that people can ask anytime, this is not a secret, but we wanna make it easy to access.
Sure.
Helps create that trust. And then we passed a slew of financial policies, I promise we're not gonna have to go over them all in detail, but we do have a new accountant with some slightly new procedures and focuses, so we need to update our financial policies, so don't get stale, so that's gonna be her department improvement plan. So those are, if you or the residents wanna see more, there's about three times more than what I went over in here, in terms of what the departments are focusing on. It seems a lot, but each department, we talked about how much time you have, what you can commit to, to not make these lofty or unattainable goals. People can see this as a public document, we'll be posting it up in the offices, so people can focus on it. And they do way more than this, this is just some of those goal posts that they can have in their radar in order to, you know, accomplish and increase their competencies.
So are these goals also discussed during, you know, departmental reviews?
Yes, so when I did reviews last year, I had everyone do a self-review, they submitted that to me, I digested that, and I brought up their goals document. And when we sat down and went over my reviews and comments, we went over all three, came to an agreement, and then solidified the review. So they are incorporated, and at that point, it's about halfway through the year, so there's still time, if we haven't hit some goals, to refocus on them. So it's kind of a quarter-two, quarter-three focus, finishing out the year and then heading into the new cycle.
So how are you with, are you like a, or are we, and all that, as far as, you know, our goals, do you sort of check a box when you finish a goal? Or is that goal still sort of stay there, cause it may still factor in towards, you know, other goals, you know, fostering sort of collaboration between goals? You know, I know, sort of for a weird question, but what are your thoughts on that?
I hate to say it depends, but you heard me talking about, you know, we're thinking two, three years down the road. And some of the goals I got were, you know, I'm gonna create an online permitting system that the idea of that is great, but the cost, the employee investment, the way it fits, it doesn't work, right? So maybe that's a five-year goal, not a one-year goal, we kind of ramped them back down, so some of them will feed into each other. If you look at last year's goals, a lot of the goals are just updates on that, they're not necessarily the same goal, it's, okay, now that I've done this, let's work on that.
Yeah.
So a lot of last year was, let's create some sustainable procedures, but now that we've done that, okay, now let's create some packets and some public-facing stuff, now that we've kind of fixed our own ship. And that's it, that's the
Great, looks great, and I think, you know, it just has to be said that it's okay to not meet all your goals. You know what I mean, not that it's giving, not you, I'm not saying specifically, I'm just saying overall, it's much better to have some goals left in my mind than it is to have completed them all four months in advance.
Yeah, or to do them after you've done something.
Sure, sure.
That was my favorite.
Yeah, exactly.
Did that goal.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll move on to additional new business, that would be the Hubbardston Open Space Plan, sort of draft update. This is one of the plans that we'd be reviewing as we move along here.
Yes, so the Open Space Committee asked to be on this agenda, I don't see them here, so perhaps we'll put this on the next agenda and make sure we double invite them.
Just an observation, as I'm looking at the Open Space, two thousand eighteen, this should probably be updated anyway. Just a list of the people, cause some of, even the board is likely, we should have Mike still mentioned, so, at least the one I'm looking at.
No, all the names are, this, I mean, you've still got, you've got Rayanne is the, so there's all, I'm sure that'll be updated.
I think that should be updated.
So I, it's probably our fault for not inviting them directly, but they're speaking to this agenda item, so we should probably put it off and make sure they're here. I don't think I could speak to it intelligently.
Sounds good. Okay, so we are at setting a special town meeting date, and why are we setting a special town meeting date?
Alright, so as we've talked about with the budget process, the we rejected the Quabbin Regional School District assessment, by, not charter, but by district agreement. If four of the five towns say that the budget assessment, the certified budget assessment is acceptable, if they say yes to that, then the budget passes. So four of five towns did, us being the lone dissenter, which means we have to now adjust our budget, so we're fourteen thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars off. So we need to lower our budget by that much.
Or what? Or we risk several things?
Or Well, two So two big things, one, we can't set our tax rate, which means we wouldn't be able to, this sounds great on paper, but we wouldn't be able to set the real tax rate and send out tax bills on January one, we'd just send a really big one out later on. Uh, which means we wouldn't have the cash flow in order to pay our bills, which means we'd have to borrow, and it would cost more money, that's one problem. The second problem is, the Department of Revenue and the state require that you have a balanced budget, and our budget's out of balance. So by the end of the fiscal year, and more preferably before we run out of money, we need to have a balanced budget.
Can it affect our bond rating as well?
For sure, yeah, they want you to take care of this stuff as soon as possible, so it we did set the budget the way we should set the budget, and these next round of cuts are going to be painful, but now that we know that we have to cut, we have to cut. It's kind of the most concise way to put it.
Yeah, I think we tried the best we could. So that date, which I know you've hashed around a little bit.
So balancing, we need to set the tax rate before the tax rate cycle comes in. We really wanna get that done by early November, in order to give the staff enough time to set the tax rate properly, come in and have your tax classification hearing, print the tax bills, and get them submitted for January one, knowing that the holiday season's there. So it needs to be done by early November in order to accomplish that. We also don't wanna make it too soon, because I think we might have a couple items that need to go on the warrant. So October twenty-first seems to be a happy medium, I checked it with the treasurer and the accountant, they're both good with that. The assessors, in order to finish the year and do the tax rate properly, gives us a little bit of time, and it's also during one of your regularly scheduled meetings, which I thought you would appreciate. So it'd be Monday, October twenty-first. Tell your friends and get a quorum.
So this'll be a special town meeting?
Special town meeting.
With this item for an agenda, and then once we open the warrant, deciding whether or not to add anything else to that.
Correct.
And whether or not any citizens petitions or anything else would come in.
Correct.
Okay.
So we would close this, and the first meeting in October, which gives us two meetings to discuss potential, potential warrant articles.
Okay. Anyone have any problems with October twenty-first that, that, no, Chris?
No.
Okay.
None.
So
Let's hope we get a quorum.
Yeah, sure, hopefully it's easier in the summertime. So you need to open the warrant now?
So, yeah, I would vote to set that date and vote to open the warrant, two votes.
I make a motion to set the special town meeting date as October twenty-one, two thousand nineteen. And can I make it the same motion also to open the special town meeting warrant for said meeting?
Second the motion.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Okay, so you've got, I assume, the terminology already pretty well drafted for how that article's gonna look?
It'll look exactly like it did on the last, we can be very specific with it, but it'll be very similar to the last town meeting, we're just adjusting the budget down.
And, and
And the finance committee will meet again, and we will banter about, there's not a lot of changes, except we just have to cut in some areas. Some early targets are the FinCon Reserve Fund, Road Maintenance Fund, a couple hours from employees, and
Insurance, still, again, or no?
No, we're out of room there. So we'll live to survive another year, but they are gonna be painful cuts, we're gonna lose some services.
Have you spoken to the school administration since town meeting?
Yes, so we are working on the library roof project, we've done several capital projects since. And we plan on opening the dialogue about, the next budget's coming sooner than we want to, so we need to continue to discuss ways to make these assessment numbers work, it's the same as any department. All the departments want more money, we just gotta figure out how it fits into the big picture.
Okay. Okay, thank you, so next will be the select board goals for two thousand twenty. Which you provided last year's goals in our packet. Alright, put them right up on the screen, these are last year's goals.
So first, why would we ask the select board to do goals, mainly you set the tone for everyone else. And also it helps us as a staff structure what comes before you, and helps us clarify our thinking in terms of how to execute the budget and other services in town. It's definitely a helpful document and exercise.
Do you mind if I just go through our fiscal year nineteen goals? Okay, alright, I'm just gonna go through them here, might as well read them, there aren't that many, see how we did. So first was, again, no specific order here, bullet, bullet one. Prioritize road maintenance and continue to build momentum for major repair projects like Route sixty-eight North, the Town Center project, and the Flag Road reconstruction project, this includes investing money when possible and advocating at a local and state level for support additional funds. I think as advertised, we've done what we can here, we were unsuccessful with the strap grant for Flag, but we have some other plans on how to deal with that as far as additional monies we may have for that sort of work. And then additional money was allocated for the Town Center with some additional discussion to come soon, so, and the sixty-eight North project, which has been bid and hopefully soon to be awarded and begun, so I think, you know, that's that. Anyone chime in at any time, please. The next one is develop a building upgrade plan, acceptable to town, addressing municipal space needs. This plan should include incorporating past findings, examining alternative space utilization, and proposing future building projects. So I think, in my opinion, we began doing this, and then we stopped for a while, and then we sort of readdressed it a couple of months ago. After, you know, allocating some money to do a, some schematic designs. And, you know, as recent as our most recent meeting, we've, I think, gotten a little bit more serious about, you know, making some plans about moving forward in some direction on this. So, you know, we'll talk about the twenty goals in a minute, but that's that. The next one is continue to promote Hubbardston as a strong and welcoming town where residents wanna live and businesses wanna invest. This outreach should continue to modernize, take advantage of new website platforms, social media, and if necessary, investigating in outside promotional sources. You mean, you know, some of that I think we've done, I don't know about the outside promotional sources, really. But as far as, you know, working with, or having Todd part of the team now, and helping us with what he can, and then Katie and whoever else. You know, I think that's just an ongoing thing, you know, I think we can probably do better, but there's only so many things we can do in the first place on that. Next was consider creative economic development strategies that leverage existing Hubbardston assets to solidify current businesses and attract new investments. That's the, you know, the grand goal of every rural town in Massachusetts, and New England, or wherever else, is to do that. And, you know, I think that's similar to the last one of one of those things that's ongoing, but it's, you know, as early as you know, as early as today, with your email, I think that was today about the the town pit. Some discussions on maybe some, you know, that's the sort of thing that, we don't have that many assets, right, but for some of the ones we have, it's good to see that conversation going. Uh the next was uh create a long-term strategy for larger infrastructure investments like water, sewer, um uh and town-owned property. Some of that has to do with the discussion we just had, uh such as the pit and whatnot, the water and sewer, um for all of you, uh just to 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 the last, I think, real look into the water sewer was a study that we had Weston and Sampson do back in two thousand twelve that did a full analysis of what the options would be and how what the costs would be for water and sewer. That included um whether or not we would connect to Rutland, whether or not we would connect to Gardner, whether or not we would build our own treatment plant down sort of beyond where the highway barn is and what the costs and all that stuff would be for it, so I think it's been till about then since we've done anything serious on that. The main reason was is the minimum cost was at, you know, seven years ago, seven or eight million dollars to really do anything, so that and for only to be providing water and sewer on Main Street and Route sixty eight, that was sort of a the non-starter, I think, at the time, but not a wasted amount of effort by any means, but that's that's about the last I remember on that, so I don't, you know, I don't know, um
Did you find that study, Ryan?
Yeah, I was reading it today, actually. I have a meeting with um uh a a grant provider that might be able to provide some insight on that tomorrow. Uh as part of direction I got from this board to to look at this based off your goals. I'm not ready to speak to it, but it's definitely a a long-term thing with beginning, beginning discussions about it again, but I I was reading it today, yeah, so I do have that.
One one grant option um that was discussed a few times since that was the U- US Department of Agriculture. They can provide s- s- uh small town rail assistance, um they do it, and I've seen it in a number in what I do in business um for construction, that they provide these significant amount of money towards, you have to have certain criteria, we we may be a little too big for. Actually brought this up to Rep. Jim McGovern when I went to one of the, there was a selectman's meeting in a couple years ago in Rutland, uh that we attended with him. A few people in the area and that was, he was sort of asking questions like this, these sort of grander questions about what's, what are you lacking in town, I'm like most things, but that was a big one, you know, and that was discussed, you know, federal government, that's who he is, and that's the sort of funding it would be, so that's the sort of thing we're hoping that might be available at some point, we'd sort of slide into, but who knows?
And I have a meeting with USDA in two weeks.
Okay.
Hopefully have some updates for you on on what's available or not, so we can either start or stop discussions.
Sure.
Uh on the um town owned, you know, town-owned property, long-term strategy for town-owned property, uh I don't know if the board wanted to maybe direct Ryan to hire a forester to assess some of the lots, see if they're worth um starting a forestry program on some of these stagnant lots. I don't know if you guys thought that, to generate some income for the town.
Okay, yeah.
And, you know, with a long-term goal towards um you know, uh forest management where we could, uh you know, every twenty years maybe go in there and if we could identify some lots, if we have some you know, and go there and and make a little bit of money every few years, whatever the foresters recommend.
Yeah.
I don't know if you need a motion or just for that or just, maybe you can
Received.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
I did one thing in terms of excuse me, the uh discussion around concerning the pit. I'm happy to hear that, you know, that's being considered to to uh talk about it, cause I remember it was a couple of years ago, um when we thought we had some interest uh in that area, one of the things that had been explored, you may remember, um was Gardner had offered, you know, possibly, that was one of the things that was possible of sharing the w- water for de- development that would have been in that, in the pit, because uh I think for anyone coming in business-wise and and I want, I very much in favor of it, I think that can be a positive thing if if that we can say that water is would be available to them, because it's it's also a deterrent when people wanna come in, well we, you don't have water here other than wells, so I as the discussion is going on, I think that's something we should uh look into again is, uh with Gardner, cause that hadn't been discussed before, do you remember that?
Um I I think I remember it being talked about, I'm not sure how possible it was, um I don't think we got far enough to know how possible it was, though, yeah, I do, I do remember.
This was this was that business for that bad athletic client, you remember?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So
Okay.
Just a, what we're doing with, so it's not a mystery, um this week I'm meeting with a meeting with a consultant to talk about pit reclamation, so this directive came from this board, but also the planning board said they're trying to get all the pits to come up with reclamation plans and we have one. So the two kinda connect, we have to reclaim our pit, decide what we're gonna do with it, and then of course the question would be, what do we do with it next? So this consultant who I've not contracted with, just someone coming in to open a discussion, is gonna meet with me, I've invited a few people on Wednesday to just talk about it, and then if that goes anywhere, the next step would be to get a plan that says here's what we, here's what you could do, here's what you can't do, and here's what we think you should do. And then I would come back to this board and the planning board and say, okay, now that we have this, what do you wanna do? And then we can again investigate that, whether it's bring in water for from what I get, a lot of residents come in and talk to me about the pit, and there's a lot of different ideas. So we need to figure out which ones, which ones we gotta say, like, that's not possible. This is possible, and do we wanna do that?
And again, it's it's that's not possible, why?
Right.
Because why, right, okay.
And another thing also in regards to the building upgrades et cetera and continuing the discussion on our building needs et cetera, um I'm glad that that's gonna be another part of the discussion, because I've, are there people who've spoken to me in terms of the um quote-unquote the land that we have with the roads that was going to be for whatever buildings might have, if they have been okayed, and the symbolism here now, there's, it's overgrown. Uh and just sitting there and basically giving the impression that uh five hundred thousand dollars went nowhere. Uh so our needs are still there, they're just as great as they were the last time it was brought before, and I just think we need to continue to try to sell the idea because our 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 problems aren't going away as far as with the buildings.
Sure, I agree, I mean, we we did our best to sell it, the town decided not to do anything, so that's what our job is to um present the best case possible for for um making sure they have all the information to um make a decision again.
So at your next meeting, we have a key public discussion scheduled, and we invited the council on aging, the police, the fire.
Okay.
The library to come talk about building space with you, myself representing the town hall staff, and we're gonna push it out heavily on social media and the public.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um I think that's a good way to start talking about it again. And sort of frame the discussion, because in my conversations with all of those parties, things have changed in terms of what they're looking for, what they think is possible, and and I think it's important that that you and the residents hear that.
It's hugely possible.
Formulating your new ideas.
Should we do it in there?
We could, yeah. Um because I I think there's been some realism, but also some, hey, we think we need this and we need that, um which would help inform future decisions.
Uh back to the town pit before I forget, this um when they're talking in discussions with that, there is still um a lot of material in there that could, you know, offset the cost of any outwork being done down there, so that's just something to consider, the uh not to rule out removal of what's left in there, in the town pit.
Yeah, I I envisioned for you a joint meeting with the planning board and coming up with a long-term strategy, whether it's to exhaust the pit, reclaim it, repurpose it. Some clear
Or or all three.
Yeah.
Remove it, you know, exhaust it, level it, reclaim the slopes, and then the lower area could be whatever.
But my opinion to this board, and and I said the same to the planning board, is to own that process, so we're going to do this based off of lots of conversation and and other information, so we can claim that process and do something, otherwise it's gonna be continually a we should do something with the pit.
I've I've uh we've talked about this a little bit before, but I've re- recently actually, unrelated to this, spoken to the rep who markets the material, that Irving paper, gets rid of the short paper fiber, and they are just teeming with material they're getting look- looking to get rid of for free. You know, that's the sort of stuff that you use in the pits on the slopes and whatnot, grows crazy, so um you know, as business has sort of kicked up with the economy a little bit, there's a lot more being generated and it it's it's getting to a point now where they'll pay to get rid of it, not just deliver it for free, but actually give you money, so
Yeah. And and my feeling is like, you know, this, I believe like to the left, they may have already gone to the left, so there's a large slope.
Yeah.
So that's like a no-brainer, you could close, cause you you can't go any further.
Stabilize it.
Get that slope done, and then maybe remove what's left. And then, you know, go to your limit, and then loom that slope, and then the pad, you know, for whatever you know, you could leave it or you could just skim coat it with the fiber, that could always be removed.
Yeah. Yep.
For future, but not to like just go in there and loom the whole thing, and then you'd have to strip it all to
Go away, yeah, yeah.
But is it also the value of the material that's there, you know, you wanna cover it up?
Yep, sure.
I mean, you could always strip it go back in there, but it'd be nice to do it one shot.
And nice not to have the organics with it too.
And then that may spur development for the other pieces. Or whatever conservation, whatever they wanna do.
You know, like my plans, I'm ready.
Okay. Uh next item uh for okay to move on, uh was to develop a stronger working relationship with the Quavon Regional School District. I mean, that's just got gotta be something we always talked about and always try to work on, it's it's, you know, one of the goals I had sent you sorta about, you know, our fiscal year two thousand twenty was a little bit more specific on that, we talk about in a few minutes, but yeah, it's um I think the stronger working relationship has a lot to do with timing um throughout the course of a year, how we do that as a select board, so uh we saw this year just how, uh not that we could have necessarily changed it um the way it turned out, but we we realized how little impact we had on things as the process um moved along over the last few months, so it'd be nicer to to be a little bit more involved um earlier in the process as we've been discussing recently. Um next item is ensure the Curtis recreational field remains a town centerpiece, investing in its maintenance and improvement when necessary. I don't think that goes away, but um recently, I'd say in the last year, what the Lions did some stuff up at the uh um what do we call it, the gazebo? The bandstand?
The bandstand.
Bandstand, sorry.
Yeah.
At the bandstand, um I mean, the field over the last few years since we've had the DPW cutting it, not that that it didn't look good before, but um you know, uh now that it's part of a a just a consistent um sort of cutting process, I think it just, it's always looking great up there. Um, yeah, huh?
Or do we need a roof, I think, on the uh bandstand?
You need a roof on the bandstand, um
And the dugouts too?
You know, a replacement. Um the dugouts are just um you know, asphalt shingles, so that's not a huge deal. But the roof on the bandstand is gonna be a major product if we keep it authentic and we keep the wood shingles that are up there. Um, you know, it's it it would be, it would be you know, uh an expensive undertaking.
Does the Lions have plans to do it, or is there something maybe we could partner with them?
Not a scope for the Lions to do it, um CPA would be probably the best source of funding, but um you know, as you all know, you can't maintain property with CPA funds, so it would probably fall under the guidelines of a complete replacement if we could do it that way. You know, certainly there's funds there to keep it authentic and keep it the wood shingle like it is, which um has probably lasted upwards of thirty years now since that was put on, that's the original roof, so that would be the way I would suggest we go, um obviously it's not up to me, but um you know, I'd like to see it kept authentic the way it is and do it through that, but um
Or even something like they used on the library roof?
Um, what was that? That was copper?
Was that, was that?
Slate?
Oh, it was the original slate, okay, that was another product.
Yeah, I don't know if you can manipulate the slate to make that octagonal shape, maybe someone
Yeah. I think the other product that they thought about
Could speak more to that, but
For the slate?
Yeah, or maybe just stick with what's on the other, the uh cedar.
So Parks Parks Committee is aware of the need and uh, you know, Ryan said it should originate from that point, right, and have them bring it up and push the issue up and maybe we get it on the docket for our CPA project if we go with a complete replacement.
Okay. Speaking of the park, is it still planned to have a rink, uh skating rink for this winter?
Talked about that today.
And
There is a skating rink planned for this winter, yes.
Uh cause the question someone was asking is uh, will lights be part of the s- situation?
No.
So people can, okay, okay.
No.
They asked, I said I'd I'd throw it out there and ask.
Make sure.
But the but the rink is still
Skating from dawn to dawn to dusk only.
Where's it gonna be? Where are the plans to put it?
Uh we're planning to put it, well, they're planning to put it on Field Ten, the U- ten field.
Oh.
Which is the one right behind the um
Basketball court.
Right behind the basketball court and the and the playground there because
Yeah, I get you.
It's, it should be um, you know, handicap accessible and there's no irrigation underground there
Mm-hmm.
that it could impact, so. Yeah.
One other thing I noticed that it needs is um you've got the gate, the main gate, and it's locked, which is fine. But there's two walkways that are dirt that lead to the paved road, those two walkways I think should be paved. Cause you really, there's a, there's a really good lip there, you know, you can't really uh manipulate that that well. That needs to be paved, and it's not that, it's like ten feet.
The main walkway is also cracking now too in places leading up to the
Yeah, the walking track, the whole walking track needs to be, needs to be addressed, you know, maybe we parlay everything into a CPA project and get, you know, some of those smaller projects combined and and do the walking path, there's a large crack um as you approach the bandstand from the parking lot, that it's just expanding every year and there's heaving and whatnot when you go around the back of the track, so that that should be addressed also. Um you know, as far as that gate is concerned, it's it's not locked, it 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 can be opened.
You know, I I'm, but I didn't mean to say it was locked, I just, it's closed, but there's no path, there's a dirt path.
Right. Right.
And that should be paved, that's all.
I, yeah, on either side of the po- on either side of the uh of the uh
Entrance.
The entrance colonnades there, there 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 are people that are walking, but that's, you know, that was um I I guess it was never the intention for that to be there, it it, I I have no issues having it paved, I mean, I think that would be a great idea, but um you know, ideally, there there's really no reason for the gate to be closed, you could open the gate and go in, you know.
But it it's like that is the main entrance for walking, and it's it's dirt.
Right. Right. Well, if the gate's open, that would be the main entrance for walking. But yeah, we can, we can pave those if you want, sure, for sure.
Okay, and then the last one that we had was explore ways to increase town volunteerism and fill vacancies on town boards committees, some of the things we've done to further those efforts have been to continue on the volunteer appreciation night, um which started with a pin, this year was a little planting.
Yeah, tree.
Little tree, and then um we've also done the uh, again, the uh open house before town meeting. Um and you know, I know you, Ryan and have gotten out the word, I think we've done it, I don't mean we as a board necessarily, but I think the town's done a pretty good job based on where we're at, you know, a year and a half ago with vacancies. Where we're at now and even more tonight, we'll see some some more, it feels like people are volunteering for stuff.
It's impressive.
It is impressive, so it's it's great, so, alright, so those are last year's fiscal year nineteen goals, um and uh we talked about having some more goals um for fiscal year two thousand twenty tonight. I had submitted a couple um to Ryan um for discussion, which which I have here as well that I can read to you guys, um and then, you know, we can, we can further this discussion as well, but basically here here's a couple that I had, I'll go first in case anyone has any others. So I I this is, this is reactionary to to recent information, but it's, you know, meet early and correspond often with the QRSD to be in on the initial budget discussions, objectives and specifics on what Hubbardston can afford, which will thinking I know, and what Hubbardston should um and what Hubbardston should. This should be done in alliance with efforts to further discussion on aligning all QRSD town assessments, so the reason we're in what we're in is we've talked about for, you know, however many months now, is that the, it just luck of the draw, our assessment was this year and um the economy was what it was and our town was what it was, and it caused us to pay a a uncomfortable share of the um Quavon budget this year, more than we can afford, so um whether that means we um spearhead that effort to to talk to the other towns about what would have to happen, is change the regional agreement. I think so be it, I think I I wanna put that right up there, I wonder what our goals is to do that, and whether it's us or someone else who gets screwed, I mean it's gonna be us eventually again, you know, even if we think like, okay, we've passed it and we've got a couple of years where we're gonna be good, that's not a good way to think about it as far as I'm concerned, so I I think we we make that a goal of ours is to to get involved with with um the rest of the towns to try to do that. Uh next was further the building needs discussion and commit to supporting selected project or projects to move forward towards the next level, which is design funding and design firm selection, and I know We talked about this at our last meeting, uh Chris was was definitely all over this as far as, okay, what's the town want, like we've talked about it, we've had these surveys. Let's do it, let's move on, let's let's, you know, do that, and I think what what Ryan just talked about is the next step, which is having. The interested parties, for lack of a better way of saying it, sort of come in and talk about what they want, where they're at versus where they used to be at and that sort of thing, and and that's probably the next step. So, you know, I think that's, that goal is already underway. Um. The next is is uh work closely with the capital planning improvement committee or capital improvement planning committee, uh huh, to to align. Where the 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 board's selectment goals are with the with their discussions, factoring in what funds will be available, at what point in time and for what, and I know a lot of this has to do with. The impossible uh projections that have to do with what the school's gonna uh need from the towns. Uh, or not, but uh we we spent so much time over the last year with the Collins Center coming in for. Uh, five-year capital plans, we we talk about it all the time, um to to. So the next piece of that is to actually put it in motion and working in alliance with that committee, which is growing in members as we speak, right? Um, uh to to. Make sure that we're having the discussions the same time they're having the discussions, so. Um, you know, when when it gets to a point where we're actually gonna wanna spend some money, um we're all in as much alliance as we can. Um, and then the last one I had on there was to secure this is the final design funding for Town Center Project. To keep the momentum going now that Route sixty-eight South is done, Route sixty-eight North will be done in two thousand twenty, and the Town Center Project is slated for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, so. As we've discussed in the past, you know, we've we've come up with over two hundred thousand based on probably three different votes over the last couple of years with one vote less uh left. Um, and um, you know, whether or not we try to put this on this special town meeting. Or annual town meeting next year or whatever else, that's the stuff we wanna keep talking about, so that once we allocate that, we can get the final. Um. Design piece going with our engineers and and not have to worry about not being ready for um the state when when that comes up, so. That's it, that's all I had. Anyone else have any other goals they wanna talk about tonight, or?
Uh, maybe uh we could list those lots again on um.
What's that?
Pitch of uh Ragged Hill.
Ragged Hill.
You know, list them, if they don't sell, we'll do it again and, you know, in the spring. And just keep re- revisiting that, don't forget about those lots that we have to sell.
Actually have an update for you tonight on that, so.
Okay.
And like I said, if they don't, if they don't sell, I think a good time is in the spring, you know, we could try, if we have time, try it. Before winter hits, if nothing, try again in the spring and and every so often.
Yeah, that's gonna happen soon.
I'd like to put forth um based on something that was men- mentioned in terms of last year's goals is. Here, that wasn't done that much investigating and outside promotional sources, I like to see that. You know, ex- explored that here. Trying to, you know, get. More. Professional help and trying to uh get people interested in taking a look at Hubbardston. Okay?
And then just to add what I said before, the about the forestry. Identify some potential lots and uh, yeah.
I apologize for that call.
I would second all of yours because. Everything we've just been discussing.
Okay. Anyone else have any, any further they wanna add to fiscal year nineteen or the fiscal year twenty? Um, goals? No? Okay, we'll uh move on for now and we can um. Um, you know, talk about updating this um in the future as well.
Okay, do you wanna, so I could probably consolidate these.
And uh and keep a couple that were on there that we talked about keeping?
If you just tell me which ones to. Keep, cut.
Why don't you, um, based on our uh the your re-review of the video of tonight's meeting? Um, how we uh sort of talked about those different items, and if you wouldn't mind sending us, uh, this is how I read it.
Okay.
Do you mind?
Nope.
And then we'll uh finalize it.
Good.
Thank you.
Ryan, is there anything you think we're missing or suggestions or? Or is that in your, gonna be in your report or?
It's not, it's nothing new. I don't think there's anything you're missing, I think probably this year you should focus on. Four to six big things and do them. You know, get these things solidified and moving to set a vision for the town and the staff and then try and get them done. Um, I'm definitely guilty of this, of trying to do too many things at once, it would be good if I said the same thing to the planning board on Wednesday. Just focus on a few things that we can accomplish and let's just get momentum going, uh and I think that these are kind of what I was thinking as well, so.
Good, and then purposely staying away from stuff that you would do as far as policies, purposely staying away from stuff that other boards would do, you know, that sort of thing, because. Not that there isn't the willingness for collaboration, but as far as, you know, um making sure that there are items that 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 um. Um, can can get focused on specifically by us. Uh, okay, so now we're up to the town administrator goals, um, I guess uh, why don't you, why don't you start us off on this here, Ryan?
So I presented these to you before, um, just looking for you to bless off, so to speak, on on my goals. Um, I did update some. A little bit based on on what you were discussing with me last time, uh trying to. Commit to less in order to focus on on certain things. Um, basic changes were, wanted to look at, say quarterly outreach at the um. Senior Center and and Hub Diner, really wanna get out and see if if people wanna meet with me, and I'll know immediately, if if that's not something people wanna do, then I'm obviously not gonna waste my time sitting somewhere. But I wa- I wanna be as accessible as possible. Um, I wanna, I've been meeting with other town administrators, I've been meeting with. Businesses where possible, uh so those things have already started. And then a lot of these you'll see have been coming out in my town reports and have been my focuses. My main goal here with my goals is if you see something that you don't think should be done, or that if you see some things that should be heavily emphasized, I'd like to know that now.
Yep.
So that when evaluation time comes around or we're three quarters away through the year, we're saying things like, I've just, Jamie, the stuff you've been telling me, I've been hearing loud and clear, I've been working on it. Um, getting, making sure that you're seeing progress on those, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay, that's what we're doing tonight then. Um, and I, yeah, I see that you're the, you're the keynote speaker at a uh the the business?
On Friday, yeah.
On Friday, right, where's that again, that's at the Pine Crest?
Pine Crest condominium association meeting.
Right.
Hey, George.
Hi, excuse me, I just wanna give these to you.
Sure.
Two versions. The version from the attorney was just that name. I did, this is the same thing with the three board members on it, I felt that that was probably better, but they can do what they want.
Okay, okay. Thank you. George is our assessor.
Hi.
We judge you. Even not before, I'm sure, any of you.
I didn't mean to interrupt your meeting.
Not at all.
Alright, later. Thank you.
Alright.
So to explain this, this was, we did, we made sure we reviewed each of the order of takings and did any evaluations that were necessary. Uh, to include forty-one Grimes Road, to to make sure that we didn't devalue anyone's land and had the board of assessors sign off saying that they um. Were they evaluated, assessed it, and said there was no devaluation of land, so that we can move forward with the order of taking with with clear conscience, knowing we don't. We don't owe anyone damages. So that's what was done at the assessment, assessor's meeting tonight and just handed to me.
Uh, that meeting Friday, what time is that? Seven?
I believe it's at seven, I'll get you that, it's gonna go out on all channels as well again. Get you that, it's right now.
Okay.
It's Friday, September thirteenth, five to seven at the Pine Crest Lodge.
Okay, alright, so that was, I think we're, if we're if we're going, you're sort of still moving on, m- moving down, you think you started with community and outreach and you were carrying on there?
Uh, yes, so, um. Just looking to get approval on these, you'll see in. Department focuses, uh working on these department improvement plans, or trying to give small attainable goals for for what I think will be big impact projects to the departments.
I think the Quabon, the, you know, sort of similar to the one that we had there, if you could help, um, you know, adding to your, to your um strengthening relationship. Uh, and I know you've been working on this already and it will just only help uh all parties to 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 try and get in there early, specifically in there early with. What, I I I just like the way you put it before with, I know you have a separate life, separate from the um, you know, being the town administrator in Hubbardston. Um, as far as, you know, us giving early on saying like, this is what we can afford. Whether they accept it or not, that's, you know, just ex- just saying it out loud so they have to hear, this is what we can afford, you know, and and you helping out um. At your level to be able to to do that too.
Yeah, you see my approach to budgeting is, there's a plan for everything. Then you could, you get to the number of resources that you have, and then you look at your plan and you see what you can get done.
Yeah.
And then you adjust the plan and you go forward into the next year, I I don't see any department as being different, schools, police, fire. Um, I can tell you that on the town department side, the the wish list you get, and then you have a conversation about it, and you say, how does this fit into the big picture, how's it compared to the other departments? What you get finally from my budget is that done already. That should be done in the school process as well. And the schools decide their budget, the school committee decides their budget, it's autonomous. But, you know, a true conversation about, you know. You know, and I did go there and present to them that that an eight point eight percent increase would crush the town, I mean, it would just crush it, they they knew that too. So it shouldn't start there, um, but if they can honestly say, you know, this level of assessment gives you this level of education service. Then the budget discussion doesn't become town versus school, it becomes, okay, I'm gonna weigh. What this can do for the education department to what we need for the fire department, and then the town officials and the residents can decide which one they want more. But it's not the town officials or the school officials that decide what service level the residents want, it's the residents. But they need a true conversation about comparing those two before that can be really informed. But they should be given a fair chance at that by a good process, the process is important.
Okay, so just to sort of reiterate, um, I I'd love to be sitting here next year saying that we we. Followed through with um getting in on things early, not that we just got lucky because our assessment wasn't um part of an assessment year, uh byproduct. But that we actually felt more part of the process than we did this year. Not that we tried to and failed, I'm just saying that should be a goal.
And and I force everyone to talk about budget goals and everything like that, that's, I would invite the schools into that in fall.
Same, that's what I mean.
Let's see if we can start this way before we even start talking numbers, cause then it's easier, hey, remember we talked about this, yeah, this fell apart, right?
And I I think we gotta be fully prepared for them to be uh annoyed. You know, several times, and you know, and then just, sorry, we're gonna keep at, you know, I think that's gotta be part of the processes, cause it's gonna be very different than has happened in the past. So I think we just gotta be prepared for some pushback and for some. Uh, um. You know, uh unwillingness maybe to to change things a little bit, but I I think we feel like we have to. Um, okay?
So moving on, um. Budget and finance goals, this just helps me put together the type of budget capital requests that you want, I don't like to surprise you. I like the final product you get to be pretty much, okay, now that we know what we've got, can we weigh resources, et cetera, so just trying to inform that. Through good reporting, again, the audit shouldn't be a big surprise at the end of the year, I should be doing. Quarterly reports to you, so you're you're tracking things, the end of year transfers, I think you saw that went smoother this year, cause. Tracking it and reporting it to you rather than you finding out, you know, when it's too late. And then infrastructure, I really trimmed these down to focus on the capital plan and the road maintenance.
No, I think it's good, I think, you know, Chris challenged you to pare it down a bit. I I I don't know, I think it, I think it looks uh, I think it looks good. Anyone else have any um, anything they wanna add to this? Or subtract from this?
Ryan, as far as um. Grants. And search seeking out. Grants, is that on here? Fine, uh. You know, I I don't know if this, how much time you can, you know, devote to that or if we can find any, like sometimes I may see some online for like, say, energy related. Um, and they're for municipalities, have you looked into anything like that, like, it's like say for the um mini split? You know, I don't know if there would have been or if there's anything available from the state for reimbursement for installing a uh updated heating system or air conditioning. Um.
So.
Just maybe keep an eye out for things, energy related, that would.
Certainly if you see anything, send it.
Yeah.
The the idea behind the. The capital plan, right, is to get ahead of that stuff, I mean, that was a, we had to fix it, it just wasn't the time to.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And I can tell you right now, the grants that are coming from the state are not the way they were. Even two years ago, three years ago, they, we've applied for. For culvert design, we didn't get it, we applied for the strap grant, we didn't get it.
Complete streets is gonna be the same thing, it's like, once everybody, that's what I mean, once everybody starts realizing that's money there, it's hard to.
We didn't get the complete streets. And what they told us was, um, although we understand that you have needs in your town, you're not tying it to economic development, you're not tying it to rural development and and residential growth. Right, so. You see me peeling back the idea of we need to focus on what economic development is for our town and the infrastructure investments that that we can make in order to be competitive for these grants in the future. Um, and we were just asking for, hey, we wanna analyze this culvert, that type of grant.
Yeah.
And we're like, well, how does that feed into the development of your industry? Like, well, it doesn't in Hubbardston, and I'm not saying we're not gonna stop trying, but.
Yeah.
Uh, with the sidewalk high street that we went for, they said, well, how does that increase bicycle traffic and, you know, flow to your economic development center? I said, well, it 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 will, and we have the town center design and updated bylaws and all these things, but we we gotta do it first. And they're like, well, you need it there and then we'll give you the grant for that.
Right.
It's frustrating. Um, so it's back to planning, um, and trying to see what Hubbardston's gonna look like in five to ten years and projecting where those grants are gonna be, but we do apply for every grant that we can. Um, and, you know, I don't see them all, but if you do see them.
Okay.
We need them.
Okay, um. Alright, any anything further from anybody? Ryan, anything else on this? No, okay. Alright, let's move on, uh.
So you're good with these goals?
I'm good, we're good with these goals.
We're gonna make them happen then.
We just said that.
Okay, this one isn't overly controversial, the budget calendar.
Okay, considering it's charter.
It's by charter. So by charter, we have to approve a budget calendar. See, it looks a lot like last year, just wanna highlight a couple of things. So we'll be finalizing the budget calendar hopefully tonight. Minus any changes, we'll be submitting capital requests from the, to the departments, trying to get the C I P C to meet by the end of this month. Get those capital requests in, get that board going and committee moving, they should be done with their efforts by December. In late October, talking about goals, and then November you get into revenue, and then the budget requests go out. December, we're talking about the financial forecast given to you and the capital plan given to you, so you can see what's coming in the budget year. Can get that input before we create my budget. And then um pushed everything as far back as we could into March, based off the charter's requirements to try and get the real numbers from Quabon Regional School Districts, so we're not giving you a. A budget that has to change a lot. And then moving, believe it or not, into the annual town meeting and warrant and town meeting again set for June second.
Those should all be two thousand twenty, right?
Yes, they should. And will be. Okay.
So do you want a motion um to uh accept the budget calendar based on uh the changes of those dates?
Yeah, so this will be met, uh the finance committee will meet and use this, and obviously it's a living document, so it's, you're not voting that it never changes, you're voting that it's implemented.
Okay.
On the October twenty-first, that's the same date now for this special town meeting. Is it? Is this just to have these discussions or um?
That's correct.
To have had them beforehand?
So I would push that to your next meeting.
Okay, yep.
It'll be November fourth.
Okay, someone wanna make a motion?
Uh, I'll move to um accept the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one budget planning calendar. As presented.
Second the motion.
Okay, discussion and with the changes there that.
Yeah, with it, yeah, yep.
That it matters, but that we just discussed, okay.
Hmm.
Can't be that amendment all right?
Yep.
Any discussion, further discussion, all in favor?
Yes, I.
Yes, okay. Uh, sounds good, uh you're up again, Ryan, with the T T A report?
Just gonna call it up here. So much of this has been, uh, discussed already, just the update I gave you earlier that Hardwick and New Braintree did approve the school assessment,
Hmm.
um, which leaves a deficit of fourteen two ninety-three that we'll be addressing at a town meeting. Again, just the early cuts that we're looking at, our employee hours, human resource support, um, that's why you see that, me pivoting to that as a main focus, road repair money and reducing the FinCom reserve. So, the FinCom reserve will seem like a simple thing, just cutting down what we have in reserve. That is not only for emergencies, we also use it a lot to cover snow and ice deficits and if we don't use it, it becomes free cash, which funds our capital.
So what's it going down to?
Fifteen?
Um, we, I would probably be recommending to you that it goes down six thousand dollars.
To what?
Thirty-five to twenty-nine thousand. Possibly as low as twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Which is not a lot for a nine million dollar budget. Um, nine point three now. Human resources, so Iris began working in the assessing department, uh, she's hit the ground running, been working with her to, to try and beef up, uh, that position, although held down nicely by Bobby, has been, um, we now have a full-time focus there that we share with, with Rutland. Uh, let's see. We are, uh, going to be working on the human resources guide, which will be, uh, important to focus staff. I wanna have a document to lean on for, for people to understand and to be transparent. We using grant money to create that. Um, we need to make employee retention a number one priority. I keep saying that, um, cause it costs too much money to keep bringing new people in. We, we've had decent retention lately, but we wanna make sure that's sustained. Okay, financial management, uh, talked about several of these things. We approved the budget calendar, gonna engage the capital improvement planning committee. We sent out, uh, a request for dates today for them to have their first meeting and you'll get your five-year plans in December, so we can start the budget process. I know that no one wants to, uh, start talking about the budget in September, but it comes quick. Master plan, I met with the planning board, um, last week, it was a very productive meeting. I was very happy to be invited there. We talked about the master plan, so just tracking, I know you signed some grant monies and everything, but that we have a natural and cultural resources chapter draft complete. It looks like that's gonna get done. We're very hopeful in another grant to complete two more chapters.
How many will be left after that?
We would have four chapters left, um, because two of them can be written from existing plans and we do have a plan to apply for another grant, so we do think we can get the master plan done in, in two years, fully completed and implemented, which is
That's amazing.
Um, I've made it a focus, the planning board's making it a focus and we're getting a lot of outside help, which is the way it should work. Uh, also, we just talked about the PIT reclamation, economic development. We've got some clear focuses for Todd Miller to take on sign, solar and affordable housing recommendations and bylaw updates. So you'll be seeing that coming from the planning board. It's something, one of their main focuses is to work on that. All of that is gonna try and tie to vision and goals in order to get everyone on the same page in terms of what we want for economic development. The most fruitful discussion that we had Wednesday and also the most difficult was, uh, we said, I said to them, what businesses do you want to see here? Not specifically like we want Target or we want Dunkin' Donuts, but what do you want the town to look like? That's an important part of the, the master plan and the vision. That's very difficult for a lot of these boards on, to, to articulate and to understand. So they're gonna have a conversation coming up and I encourage the board to participate in it, is, okay, what do we want this town to look like? Cause then all of the bylaws, all of the efforts and all of it should be focused on meeting that vision rather than the other way around, like coming up with a project and then trying to get the bylaws to go all the way around it. And that's kind of part of that, making us more competitive for grants and that conversation that we had. So the planning board's gonna have that discussion and, and I encourage all the boards to get on the same page with that and say, okay, this is what we want our town to look like, Hubbardston twenty twenty-four.
So you do or you don't want Dunkin' Donuts?
What's that? I want anyone that will, that will pay more taxes than the residents. I do want Dunkin' Donuts.
So does my son, he's wanted that since he was in the elementary school. He had to remember an assignment they were giving, he had to write out what things they thought would should come into the town and he, his big argument was for Dunkin' Donuts.
Tell him to commit.
That would be a game changer.
Tell him to lobby the planning board.
Yep.
Come in and get involved. Uh, department changes. So the assessors office used to be in the library, we've moved it over here. We moved planning out of building and they're in their own, in the old assessing spot, also with veteran services and Mart who are very part-time. So it become mostly planning and storage office. These are for efficiencies, cause we have storage issues, but also we wanna put the finance team together. I've already had a lot more good fruitful conversation with the assessing department, uh, so we think it's a good thing.
Aye.
So, scheduled open meeting law training for, uh, town staff and volunteers. This will be October fifteenth. Uh, encourage board to send a rep as well. We've, we've asked every board to send a rep if they can in order to train the other members of the board and be a subject matter expert as well as the staff. So the first meeting, it will be at two o'clock and then the next meeting will be at five o'clock. If we got a huge push to say make it at seven o'clock, we would do that as well. Just looking to get feedback, still, you know, a month and a half away from that, so, or month or so. We've already got above ten people signed up for each.
And it's gonna be here?
That'll be here, done by KP Law for free, so that's the best type of training.
So it's, am I reading this correctly then, uh, what's, the first training's at two? And for those who can't make it at two, it's also gonna be given the same thing again at five?
Yes, so it's one or the other. Um, and we can make it later. People said, I'd love to go if it was at six, we'll make it later. Uh, and then employee recognition, uh, Detective Scott Chadney, missed this somehow, but he completed his associate's degree in criminal justice in the spring. He tried to hide it, but I found out, so just wanted to call attention that, um, his commitment to multi-year education and, and becoming better is gonna pay dividends in the police department. I think a lot of our public safety officials, DBW members take their professional development seriously, so I just wanted to call out his professionalism and his commitment.
That's great. Does he move up a, a pay step too, cause that?
Uh, I, I don't know, I'd have to check. I hope so.
Me too.
Unless that's not currently in the contract and then. Uh, and that's it, that's my report.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, um, we've got, uh, we've got some policies to review. Uh, the first is the, the boot drive prohibition, uh, which again, just setting the table quickly, this is, this is just part of our standard, uh, policy review.
Yes.
And this is the one of the day, or one of the ones of the day.
Let's start somewhere.
It's correct. So the, the, the boot drive prohibition was put into effect, um, on two thousand twelve and the last couple of years we've, um, uh, exempted the lions, uh, on singular basis, bases to do, uh, do a boot drive and, um, what are you, what are you recommending we do here?
Um, I do not think that this policy needs to change. Um, I don't think it's restricting anybody except the ones you wanna restrict. So you, you don't want people soliciting, it's a public safety concern, especially without proper crosswalks and signage, um, when the when the lions do do it, it's highly advertised, um, but it, you know, it does impede traffic a little bit and purposely, so I would keep this very limited, which it seems to be.
Yep.
Um, it's also very consistent with other policies in surrounding towns.
Yep, sounds good. It's not overly complicated. It's, uh, um, been working out the last few years, so I agree. Anybody have any comments on that? Um, okay, and, um, how about legal council access? This was a hot button, um, a couple of years ago, into last year.
Uh, so the reason why this was, uh, is why I recommended this be put in place to you is I was having trouble tracking who was talking to town council. Our costs were, were very high, so, uh, after the board implemented this policy, KP Law funneled everything through me. This is not to restrict every board member, especially chairpersons have the right to talk to council. The idea was that they would just talk to me first, so I knew council was talking to them and could track the cost and make sure that any questions they were asking couldn't be answered by staff.
Sure.
Or a free lawyer.
Yep.
So, um, it also, you know, sometimes people just wanna talk to the lawyer and, and they just don't need to, so we can have a conversation about that and if they still wanna talk, then they still get to talk. So I'm not keeping anyone from town council, just funneling it through one source.
Okay.
I have not had a lot of pushback on this, to be, to be candid. People seem to think it makes sense and, um, whoever needs to talk to council has, we've never, never kept anybody from doing it.
Sounds good. If it ain't broke. Um, I have no comments. Anybody else have any comments?
Nope.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks. Those were two easy ones. So, a couple more next week or the next meeting?
Yes.
Alright, uh, so now we have some minutes to approve.
I would vote to, uh,
Okay, sounds good.
Continue to approve. We can change the date and make sure that people know that they're up to date.
Good idea.
So you wanna motion?
Yeah.
For?
For the boot drive prohibition and legal council access policies. Do, uh, to re-adopt them, I guess.
I move to, uh, re-adopt the, uh, boot, uh, drive, uh, policy and the legal council access policy.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Three yeses, I'm staying?
I'm staying.
Okay, now we have some minutes to approve from July eighth, twenty-second, twenty-ninth, and August twenty-first and twenty-sixth. These are open meeting minutes?
It's regular meeting minutes, it's it.
Okay. I move to accept the, uh, minutes of the July eighth, two thousand nineteen meeting.
So Jeff, Pat, Chris and, uh, uh, Jamie were there, I was not?
Jamie. Right.
Second the motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Staying?
I move to ex, uh, accept the, uh, July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, uh, voter selectmen meeting.
Okay, we were all there?
Yep.
Second it.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes, uh.
I move to accept the, uh, minutes of the meeting July twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Jeff, Pat and Jamie were there?
Yeah.
Second it.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm staying?
I'm staying.
Okay.
And, uh, I move to, uh, accept the, uh, minutes of the August twenty-first, two thousand nineteen meeting.
Of which we were all there?
Yes.
Second it.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
And, uh, can I make the motion even though I was absent?
Nope.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-sixth. Was I there?
Yep. I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Staying.
Okay, uh, now we have a, uh, controversial request for appointment to a town board and committee. Uh, that would be Michael Stoudt for capital planning. I'm gonna call Pam right now and see if this is okay.
Is he listening or watching us?
I don't know.
Sending him a message?
Whether she knows or not, um, anyway, so we have a
He brought his kids when he signed this document to volunteer and there was a lot of eye rolling from his daughters, so.
Oh, sure.
Is there anyone else interested? I mean, should we call them in for an interview?
Oh, that's funny. Um, okay, well.
So, to, eh, be a good person, a lot of, uh, municipal experience for a, a board that has many eager volunteers but haven't done a lot of municipal work, so it kinda stabilizes it.
Yeah, I think so.
It's good to, good to keep them involved. He's gonna build the background.
This would make it full, by the way.
Oh, wow, great.
Yep.
So, okay. Someone wanna make a motion?
Move to accept the appointment of Michael Stoudt to the capital planning committee.
Second it.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Aye.
Committee updates, uh, real quick, uh, the Q E M P, we haven't met in, uh, months. Uh, we did have one planned for September, um, that's probably gonna get pushed to October just based on, uh, school starting and all that stuff. We were gonna have it in the summer too, but then there was all this stuff going on with the, the towns and the revotes and, and all that, so it's something we're, we're looking to reengage pretty soon. And then it's been a few months for the town center committee, but we're gonna have one in September. Um, a few reasons, uh, one is to update, um, the committee on where we're at, uh, with the town center obviously, but we also use the, the time to update the committee just so we're sort of, you know, the informed roads people of how other, it's going with other roads projects or grants or whatever else is being applied. It's nice for a group of eight of us to sort of all have that information, so we can, we can be informed on that and, and, uh, be able to, um, respond to people when they ask. And then also, um, there were some ideas on, uh, the lighting ceremony, uh, which I think I may have copied you on some of the stuff, Ryan, that, um, uh, to, to sort of, um, amp it up a little bit, um, from, from the schools and the seniors this year, so we're all gonna meet to discuss that as well. We've, we've sort of been the, the center, the centerpiece is the wrong word, but we've sort of been the people that come to, to set things up when it's come to the lighting committee over the last three or four years, so, uh, I think, I think it's a good time, early, early, to get people's opinions on it in September and then we can uh, bring anything else up that, uh, we see fitting at that time, so. Those are the updates there on the, on the committees. Um, I don't, I don't have any matters, um.
Just one quick one.
You guys have anything you wanna bring up that we haven't discussed already that popped in your heads? Okay, Ryan, what do you got?
So this is, uh, just got it today. So Ragged Hill, the lots that everyone, that we've been talking about.
Alright, where are we?
So, so this is Ragged Hill Road.
I know where we are.
Okay. So the lot thirty-three here, that is the swap with the Gardner Road lot that was done a lot of time ago. We got an update from the, um,
Yeah. What's the name of that last, what's their last name?
Vincent.
Vincent.
The Vincent family.
And we trust, yeah.
They had some some personal stuff, so they've got, they've, they've pulled it. So our lawyers sent it to them, they've had it for a while with their lawyers. They re-engaged today, so we're hoping to get that done again this year. It's just a long process. The four lots here are the ones that, that are continually mentioned, two seventeen, two eighteen, two nineteen and two twenty. These are all town-owned pieces that could be sold. The board's instructed me to look into that. Uh, we also identified one forty-seven and fifteen, so these are landlocked parcels, uh, that one's a landlocked parcel. And that's a smaller piece. I don't know if the board's interested in, in getting those off the rolls or at least offering them. So the process would be
Yeah.
Yeah, that's that stuff too.
So the process would be, I would write up an RFP, um, since the planning board is interested in affordable housing, maybe throw in a clause that's preferential to affordable housing, it's just spitballing. The RFP would come to you and be explained before it went out to the public.
Alright.
That's where we're at with that.
That's good, cause then we can talk about whether or not, what's part of sort of the base RFP and then whether there are alternates to it and additions and that sort of thing.
So I'll draw that up probably before your next meeting.
Okay.
To have a discussion about it, to solidify, get it out before the end of the fall and if it's not successful again, try again in the spring. But see, see what people wanna do with that land, hopefully use it for something, build on it and
Yeah, the nice lot, nice flat lots.
Get it back on the tax roll.
Yeah, I'd be nice, if we can do it. Um, I agree though, either by the time snow really comes, um, we do it this fall, if not, then push it off, cause not a lot's gonna go on during the winter time. From interest, so, okay, great. Anything else? Anybody? No? Okay, public press? No, they're quiet? Alright, it is, yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn the, uh, public meeting at eight twenty and, uh, with the intent of moving into executive session. I'm gonna read them for the reasons.